Welcome to the Candidates Forum for District Three, sponsored by the Amherst League of Women Voters in partnership with Amherst Media. My name is Susan Millinger, and I'm a member of the Amherst League. I will be moderating this forum. You may want to know that I'm a Shutsberry resident, so I have no horse to back in this election. The mission of the League of Women Voters is to encourage citizen participation in government and influence policy through education and advocacy. We welcome you to join us. This meeting is being recorded. The forum will be rebroadcast by Amherst Media and available for streaming. Please check their website for details. Election Day is November 2nd. Early in-person voting will be available during business hours from Monday through Friday of the preceding week with evening hours on Thursday. Absentee ballots may be requested until October 27th. For more information, please visit the town clerk's website. If you have a question for the candidates, please type it into the Q and A box on your Zoom screen. We will have time for only six questions, so we apologize in advance if we do not get to yours. Remember that you can find more information about the candidates on Amherst Media and on the town's online bulletin board. In addition, the League will publish an election guide in the Amherst Bulletin the Friday before Election Day. The format for this session is as follows. There will be no opening statements. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. The session will end with two-minute closing statements from the candidates. So let us start with the first question. How would you assess the first three years of operation under the Home Rule Charter as measured against the values identified by the Charter Commission in 2017? These were citizen participation, representativeness, effective, deliberate, and efficient structures, accountability and transparency, a clear voice for Amherst, avoidance of big-money politics, a culture of tolerance and respect, strategic and long-term planning. We're going to be asking these questions initially in alphabetical order, and then the order will shift. Ms. Pam, would you like to answer the question first?
Well, there are so many parts to that that it's difficult to know where to start. I think the first thing that we had to do as a town council was to understand the Charter and our role in it. And we've spent a lot of time just educating ourselves. How well we have met many of these goals is really up for discussion. In the council, in terms of, I remember I tried to write down these words, and they're really kind of scribbled here, but representativeness. I would have to say that the council at this moment is not truly representative of the whole town of Amherst. And we're looking forward for this next election to perhaps help do that. One of the problems is, of course, that the job of councillor has turned out to be much bigger than we thought it would be and is one that is very challenging and perhaps not as attractive as we had hoped it would be. As for transparency, so much is going on right now. I think it's very difficult for the public to know what issue is being brought up when. And the zoning issues that are coming fast and thick and change every time we come to a meeting are very hard to follow. So only a real hardcore group of people is actually keeping up with the council. The general public, I think, may find it way too confusing. So strategic planning, we certainly have been working on that. And there are many good plans in the works for the betterment of Amherst. But I think that we've been trying to do way too much too soon. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Ryan, how about you?
I would actually give the council pretty high grades. I think Dorothy's right absolutely that we're not a representative body. And that's, I think, something that's going to change in the coming election, no matter what. I hope this individual will still be able to be on that body. But I think Dorothy's right, we still have a ways to go. And hopefully, people will be excited by the election and encouraged to become more engaged. I think that's been a challenge. I don't know about Dorothy, but I felt that people are still not used to the idea of representative government. Both she and I, I think, take some pleasure in responding to people's concerns and questions and helping them sort of. And often, people don't think of us the first or second, even the third time. So hopefully, that will change in the future, that will people remember that they have two district representatives. And in this district at least, and I think in others, we take our job very seriously. And we enjoy and want to respond to your concerns and questions. So that's something I've noticed. Tolerance and respect, I've been proud of the way we've conducted our business on the council. You know, we represent 13 very different perspectives, but I think we overall have worked very well. And while the meetings are much too long, I think we have conducted them in a very respectful and tolerant way. Long-range planning, I think, is probably the area where we have the greatest challenge. And we have 13 visions, and trying to craft one has been a challenge. But we have, for instance, most recently, the comprehensive housing policy is a good example of long-range vision and one that'll guide us much in the future.
Thanks, Mr. Ryan. Ms. Taub, how about you?
Okay, well, I first, you know, my hat's off to all the council members for the long hours and the hard work and the preparation. So I think, you know, all the members are working very hard. I was concerned when we went from town meeting to a council form of government that too much power was going to be concentrated in too few. And unfortunately, that concern has not been eased. And an example of this, I get very concerned that, like, this is an example, the Community Resources Committee, made up of five council members, four of whom, so 80% of whom, were endorsed by a single political action committee. They represent one particular point of view. And I don't think it's the point of view of 80% of the members of the community or the voters. And I guess, just to give an example, I have to glance at a sheet because it's so long. The Community Resources Committee has set its mandate overseeing the master plan, land use, community and economic development, housing, neighborhoods, arts and culture, appointments to the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, and quote, "the long-term economic vitality and quality of life in Amherst." So it's kind of everything that goes to the Planning Board and then back to the council. All the important issues in our town come from five people, four of whom represent one point of view. So I would hope that with the next council, we can have many points of view equally represented. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Taub. Now, the next question, not quite so involved, so hopefully, a little bit easier to focus in on. What can the town council do to retain existing small businesses and attract new ones? Mr. Ryan, this is for you first.
Let me unmute, that would help. There are a number of things that we can do. First of all, we have the ARPA funds that are currently made available. And we're beginning to get a sense of what the town manager is thinking of doing. And so those funds are particularly, they're federal dollars that are aimed at helping businesses in particular and communities as a whole to respond to the effects of the pandemic. And so that's one place. One of the things that I've learned from the bid is that 70% of our local downtown businesses are either run by women and/or by minorities or by LGBTQ community members. So we have extremely diverse downtown business population. A second thing that I promoted along with Councillor Ross is a destination parking garage. And it's not the garage itself right now, but just the idea of rezoning what we call euphemistically the CVS lot. This is the town-owned lot behind CVS off North Pleasant Street. This is something in my conversation with business owners up and down our downtown business district, which, by the way, is a part of our district here, District Three. They have asked over and over again, give us a garage where people can come. They know they can park for free for the first hour. They know they don't have to pay until they leave. And they're within easy walking distance of our shops and our businesses and our restaurants.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Ms. Pam, how about you?
Answers fast and thick. Okay. I think one way to retain small business is to have good parking, but that means on-street parking and small parking lots that are available. I am not against a parking garage, but I much prefer Amity Street, enlarging the town lot with some of the bank property if a deal could be made. That is centrally located where the whole cultural hub that is being planned, some exciting plans by the bid in revitalizing arts downtown. Another way to improve our small businesses is to keep our sidewalks wide and friendly and repaired and to have green space, which is open to the community, where people can be social. We don't want it to be just a narrow little path around buildings to enforce the mixed-use zoning laws, that the building must in fact include small businesses and perhaps even at affordable rents. That is a very major thing, the affordable rents. There are many things that can be done to make it exciting. I went up to the Mill District for the opening of the General Store and Hannah's Art Gallery, and I was very excited by that. It had a lot of the life that we want to have bring back downtown. So we have to look to that and see what that was. And that was space for children, activities and openness and interesting activities going there. So I am for the revitalization of the downtown and hope that we can do that in such a way that really opens it up to the whole community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Pam. And Ms. Taub, you're next. But let me just remind the audience that if anybody has a question for these panelists, you should use Q and A to ask your question. Thank you. Ms. Taub?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I live very close to downtown. I walk there every day. So it is a particular priority of mine to support existing and do everything we can to attract new businesses to downtown. And actually, some of that is pretty simple. I think we could not, it's not simple, but we could start even by targeting popular businesses and venues in the Pioneer Valley and try and get them to come to Amherst. I mean, I was at Tom's Ice Cream in East Hampton recently and asked him, we don't have an ice cream parlor in downtown Amherst. And he said, oh, we went to UMass, no one's ever talked to him about it, but he would be interested. We got, you know, Jakes to come from Open Restaurant in Amherst from North Hampton. And if I can, you know, take a little credit for my husband, he literally, every time he went in there for years, said, please come to Amherst. So I think some of it is literally just doing outreach to try and bring businesses here. And I do think, you know, with the Kendrick Park Playground is a wonderful addition to downtown. And, you know, I always think it would be great to have a bakery or an ice cream parlor nearby. But I think that we can literally, we can, you know, having rents be made more affordable to businesses, having more retail space on the ground floor of the Missus Hughes Building is essential, but also really doing the hard reach of outreach to bring businesses to Amherst. And I agree with Councillor Pam. I'm a fan of the Mill District shopping area, and I would love to see more of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Taub. You're going to be first on this next question to give you a heads up. What policies or programs should council introduce to increase the representation and voices of minority communities in local government decisions?
Okay, that's a very important question. I think, you know, one of the promises when we moved from town meeting to town council, that it would allow for greater diversity on our governing body and that the opposite of that really happened. So it has to be a top priority to increase the representation, significantly increase the representation from Amherst BiPop Committee on our governing boards, committees, commissions. And I think, you know, one way to do that is outreach to the community. It's, one really doesn't know now even when an opening comes up on a board or commission, that it's really word of mouth. And it's often that members of the committee reach out to people that they know. So it's a very closed network. And I do think it's important that the application process and those who fill out the forms to be considered for a board or commission position, that that be public and transparent. A lot often, we don't even know who's applied. And the whole decision-making process is a bit behind closed doors. But I think that we have to have a process for how we reach out into the community so that when positions become available, people know they're available. They are encouraged to apply. They are shown how to apply. And again, I even know how, you know, I got on the Local Historic District Commission was really, you know, I happen to know the chair at the time. And I think we need a much more open, inclusive, proactive process.
Thanks, Ms. Taub. Mr. Ryan, you're next with that question.
Yeah, I think, first of all, I'd point out that the information is quite available in terms of online. The town manager has a very robust process. He has a committee that's devoted to reaching out to the community in terms of finding people and vetting them. But I agree that we've not succeeded as we hope we would. And so there is clearly work to be done. We have community participation officers that reach out into the community and working with them. I have a newsletter that I put out every month, and I use that to spread the word. And so everyone I meet, I just ask them, even if they don't live in my district. And I've used that newsletter on a number of occasions to announce vacancies and encourage people to participate. We also have district meetings. Dorothy and I have had them frequently, as have other councillors in their districts. And again, that's a way in which we do outreach to the community. But you're right, there's still a long way to go. I was attending briefly, when I had a few moments, the group that is concerned with the mobile, that focuses on the mobile markets. And I was deeply impressed by how they went about this process. It was from the ground up. They provided instantaneous translation services at their meetings, which is something that, again, it's going to be a cost issue, but I think that's something we seriously should consider so that, for instance, people who are speakers of Spanish could participate fully in the meeting. So I saw that as a model and ideal. And I'm hoping going forward in the coming two years that I can draw on that as another way in which we can better outreach.
Thanks, Mr. Ryan. Ms. Pam?
Thank you. This is a really challenging question. I agree with George that we do an awful lot in terms of outreach. And our district is compact. And so it is much easier for us than for some other councillors. But in order to get a broader participation, I think we really have to talk about stipends. I remember when I got involved in community political work back in Sunnyside, Queens, when I was a young mother, I stayed home. I had no money. I was able to take my kids with me. I did my campaigning and politicking with my kids. You can't do that here in Amherst. The meetings are long, arduous, at night. So I think we have to have stipends so people can afford to pay for childcare and meal replacement. Because certainly, when you're really deep into town council business, you don't do much cooking. That's just a given with this business. So I'm hoping that we can do that. We're talking about it in terms of a few committees. But I think we have to have it across town. And if somebody doesn't need the stipend, they can turn it down. Many people don't need it, but many of us do. And we don't want to have to ask for it when we need them. And that's why I don't like a fund that you have to ask for and turn the receipts in. I think there should be a stipend for committees to make this a more open and accessible way for people to participate in the community. I want young people to be part of the town council. I want young parents to be part of the town council. And I think stipends are the way to bring that about. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Pam. And Ms. Pam, you're going to be first on this next question. We have seen an increasingly deep divide between factions in Amherst with grouping of candidates and their opinions being attributed, fairly or not, to influence of groups. Could you explain what you would do to reach across and heal these divides?
Well, I truthfully don't know if I could heal the divides. At this moment, I'm an independent and I'm in the minority. I do work together with people from Amherst Forward, which is the name of the group which has a majority on the council. Yes, there are individual differences between members, but it is possible to predict votes on certain issues. There are certain things which are like, kind of like a credo, and you can count on that vote. I think we just have to try to get a more diverse council. And that's going to mean not coming from PACs, not coming from factions, but making the job more attractive. Increasing the stipend would certainly help. For the, given the work, this is a job. It's a job. It's almost a full-time job. And many people would be interested in doing it, but they can't do it at the present stipend. So we just have to do more outreach because I think that PACs that have party discipline work against the inclusive idea that was put forward to the town when they suggested the town council. This may come about naturally. I don't know. But right now, there are things that are being pushed through too quickly for the minds of many of us because there's party discipline. There is actually a party discipline that we see take place. I know people will disagree with me on this.
Thanks a lot, Ms. Pam. And Ms. Taub, how about you on this question?
Yeah, I think one, I mean, just kind of place to start is, you know, if we could all like acknowledge that reasonable people can disagree. We all love Amherst. And, you know, those of us who are involved in the town, all, it's because we feel passionate about our town that we spend so much time. And that if you have a different point of view than, you know, different representatives on the council or people, if you're on a governing board and when the public is speaking, that you're all coming from a place of wanting what is best for Amherst. I sometimes feel that there's litmus test issues and that you're with us or you're against us. And, you know, again, I think reasonable people can have, there's a place in the middle where they might meet. But if you don't share a position 100%, you shouldn't be discounted. And I spend a lot of time going to, as many people do, going to board meetings and council meetings. And there's the feeling that if you have a different position than the majority of people on that governing body, you're very soon considered one of those people. Or those people over there that don't like what we're doing or those people on that street who don't want a parking garage. And it's like you've been discounted. Once you've spoken twice at a board meeting and they know your position, if they don't share it, you're sort of discounted. And I think that we need to work really hard, you know, again, to embrace, you know, to at least respect different points of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taub. Ms. Ryan, how about you?
I really take objection to this term independent and this idea of party discipline and PACs and all the rest of it. We now have multiple PACs, if that's the term you want to use. So I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. These are groups that have agendas they want to pursue. But I don't belong to a party. I don't report to anybody. I pride myself on being an independent thinker, and I talk to everybody. And anyone who knows me knows that's true. Whether you agreed about the charter change or not, I serve everyone in District Three. And I work as hard as I can to serve everyone, and I take great pride in that. So I actually do take umbrage at this notion that somehow I'm a creature of some larger entity. Nothing further could be from the truth. On the other hand, there are things that I stand for and I stand behind. And one of them is, in fact, a destination parking garage downtown. Talk more about that in a moment if we get a chance. But also a 21st century school that's desperately needed, a library that I hope that people will vote yes for. These are things I stand for. Are those Amherst Forward positions? Well, in fact, some of them are. But I'm not sure that that's particularly related to a PAC or some kind of a larger entity. The idea that somehow you're discounted because you don't agree, that's the very nature of politics. In the end, we ask people to reason together, which we do. I listen very closely and I think hard. So I see myself very much as an independent person. I'm very happy with the Amherst Forward recommendation. But I think and vote by myself for what I think is best for this town.
Thanks, Mr. Ryan. And you will be first for the next question, just as a heads up. What are the next steps for town council towards achieving Amherst greenhouse gas reduction goals of 25% by 2025?
Next steps, first of all, I think, is a step that hopefully will take very soon, which is to approve the creation of a 21st century library for Amherst. That is a model example of what we are looking for in any kind of large-scale construction. So that, I think, would be a first and very important step, is that we go forward with that. The existing building is a beautiful, wonderful building. In fact, it will be preserved. Many of its most precious spaces will be renovated and restored to public viewing. But it is environmentally unsustainable building, and so it will be made one. So I think it's, in a sense, a model going forward for all our future projects. The Four Capital Projects, that is one of them. But we think of the 21st century school, we think of the DPW and the fire station, all of which we now have a sound financial plan for how we can pay for them. They should be at the heart of this process. In other words, in order to achieve our goals, those buildings, when they are built, and they will be, this will happen, they must be following the goals that we have set out in our Climate and Energy Action Plan. I think also, following the leadership of the ECAC and their guidance, I'm no expert in this field. Someone like Andrew Rose, for instance, who's a member of my district, is someone I look to for advice and also a little prodding occasionally to make sure that I do what I say I do in terms of the environment. So listening to them and following their advice also would be, I think, an important step.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Ms. Taub, I think you're next on this one.
Okay, thank you. Well, I certainly support and think that the council must monitor, you know, on a regular basis, how we are reaching our benchmarks to achieve carbon neutrality by 2020, by 2050. And I feel strongly that especially for perhaps families in affordable houses or, you know, families and individuals who are in need of, because it's expensive to weatherize and retrofit one's house, that for the existing dwellings, we make the resources available to, throughout the community, whether, you know, that's with funds that we have or, you know, there's grant funding and other, you know, state assistance that we might be able to draw in so that everybody can have, live in a house where their carbon footprint is reduced. I, you know, also feel strongly that, in addition to all the new buildings, which they are doing, reaching, we're trying to get to reach carbon neutrality, that, you know, as much as we can preserve existing structures, and I'm not even, you know, speaking of the library, but I think that, you know, we have many older homes in Amherst that really make us who we are and give us our sense of place. And as much as we can preserve them and enable them to be energy-efficient, that that's a direction we should go in.
Thank you, Ms. Taub. Ms. Pam, how about you on this question?
I definitely agree with George, and I support the new energy-efficient buildings that we have planned, the library, the school, and I assume the firehouse and the DPW. I support that. And Jennifer has taken a page from my book on, definitely, we must go and bring this, the benefit of new technology and some of its old technology to individual homes in terms of retrofitting and making them more energy-efficient, which will reduce costs for the homeowner as well as reducing greenhouse gas. But my particular thing that really keeps me going is I really think that we have to stop the attack on the RG neighborhood, which is green grass, lawns and trees with the idea that total density will somehow solve our tax problems. We already have a downtown which has much paved over surface. We do not want it to become a total concrete jungle. New buildings are not including any green space. They're just taking concrete and sidewalk and just not living up to what we thought we had at the heart of Amherst. If you then densify the RG that's right next to the downtown, paving over those yards and cutting down the trees so that we can bring in more and more building, you have done something terrible for climate change. We can't have all of our conserved lands set off further to the south. We must have the green, the benefits of trees, of the urban forest where we live, near downtown, to mitigate the hot summers that we know are coming and we've seen already. So there are a lot of things that we can do. We can build the new energy-efficient buildings. We can retrofit the existing buildings. And we can maintain our trees and our grasses and our lawns in our residential sections, particularly those that are near downtown and UMass, which has many, many concrete large buildings. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Pam. We have one last question, and that is, how would you, what would you see as the main issue or issues in your district? And how would you address it or them? And we will start with Ms. Taub.
Thank you. Okay, I think development issues and densification are the primary issues in District Three. What we have seen over the last six years, from 2015 to 2020, the six-year period, is that new construction in Amherst has been almost entirely built for student housing. We have permitted only 61 single-family homes throughout the town and 505 units of student housing with about apartment units primarily for students with another 267 units, many with, you know, up to four bedrooms. So, and our year-round population has, our, the population in Amherst has increased by less than 4% between the 2010 and the 2020 census. And almost all of that has been UMass enrollment. So we are losing or not So we are losing or not maintaining or expanding our year-round family population in town. And in my, in the particular precinct of Precinct 10, which is the neighborhood in District 10 between the university and Amity Place and North Prospect and Sunset, there were members of the council that seemed to want to achieve all of Amherst densification goals in our neighborhood. And I talk about footnote M all the time. It's on my website, but including, you know, Councilman Ryan would like to change the zoning so they can further densify the larger lots in our neighborhood for students, student housing. And that is an existential threat to our neighborhood.
Thanks, Ms. Taub. Ms. Ryan, how about you?
Well, I think clearly, first of all, Ms. Taub doesn't read my newsletter, which is unfortunate. The footnote M is, is a red herring. It actually is an example of how the process works and I'm, I'm very much a strong believer in the process. The idea was that we are seriously considering, the town needs to seriously consider greater density, but it needs to be done responsibly. And so that was one of the ideas that was put to the planning department. The planning department then thoroughly reviewed it. They brought back their, their report. They showed us, they showed CRC, they showed the council what would happen if, if that particular footnote were changed. And it was agreed immediately that this is, is not what we wanted. And so it's been put on the back burner. It's not, it's not going to come back for a very long time. It probably never will come back, certainly not in the form it was presented. So I just partly encourage people to just reach out and talk to us about what is going on. In terms of, you know, our district, I think quality of life is extremely important. We are going to have, at the end of Lincoln Avenue, we're going to have a new dormitory built by the university and also the grid housing replaced. And so that's going to have, I think that's something that's welcome. Many people have asked the university to build more housing. That's exactly what they're doing. But it's going to have a very profound impact on the theory in Lincoln neighborhoods. And so the conversation started, it's, it's going to be a, a long and, and important one. So I think quality of life. Finally, I'll mention this at the end, but we need to strengthen the rental registration bylaw. We need to make sure that landlords are responsible and that's, that people are held responsible for the behavior of their tenants and that they upkeep their buildings. So for me, it's quality of life and it's not increasing density. It's actually trying to respond across the townwide to the real serious housing issue that we face. And maybe I'll talk about that at the end, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. And now we've come to the closing, your closing statement.
Hold on, did you call me?
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't I call you?
I don't think so.
Okay, I apologize, Ms. Pam. Go for it.
All right, I, I'm ready. Okay, so I'm glad that George thinks that footnote M has been deep-sixed. But Evan said to me in a meeting just within the last several weeks, don't think footnote M isn't coming back. It's coming back. So I will tell you that we see that as a dagger aimed at our heart. Yes, we had a very interesting meeting with UMass. And I will say that the builders they hired sound like very interesting and responsible. But the part that was very upsetting came at the end. When one of the, we had some wonderful people who've lived 47 or 50 years on that block, people with deep connections to the community and to the university, who were there bringing their knowledge and their questions. And we were asked, is this plan, how set in stone is this plan for the new 800-member dormitory? Is there room for change? And we were told it was all done, completely done, ready to go out to bid. That's when the community was called in. I, I, I am very upset about that because one of the aspects of the plan, I, I don't believe, I think the builders did not realize this when they did it, opens up a path that would actually spill students into the residential streets. And one of their stated goals was to kind of funnel the students towards mass Ave. So to bring plans to us after it is too late to even add a word is not right. We need more family housing. I agree with George, strengthen rental registration, do as many towns do. Don't just inspect after there's a complaint, inspect when they get registered. I think that would help a lot to emphasize owner occupancy and keep out exploiters who want to rent houses by the bed. That's some of the things we're dealing with right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Pam. And I apologize for overlooking you earlier. We, I've been told that we have time for a seventh question and the question is relevant to what you all have been discussing. Please describe your efforts to expand affordable housing. And I think we will start again with Ms. Taub.
Okay, when I, what, I do need to just respond to footnote M. The council president said that it was being tabled for this council session. It would be revisited in the next council session. And just in a meeting, I believe it was in August, the chair of the community resources committee, Councilor Hanke, he said that she actually wanted to get it back on the, on their agenda this calendar year. So when I moved to Amherst, the first, very soon after moving, landlords were, this was in 2011, buying as quickly as they could, older houses in our precinct 10. And they were turning single-family homes into absentee-owned rental units. They were violating the town bylaw that you couldn't have more than four unrelated people, usually students living in a non-owner occupied dwelling. But there was really no penalty if you violated that. So I worked very hard to bring rental permitting to Amherst and that has actually been a game changer. There were landlords who actually sold houses once they could no longer rent to eight or nine students that, for was not their economic model. I believe that Amherst needs to protect particularly neighborhoods where they're, that have traditionally provided starter homes like Orchard Village. And they need to protect them as, again, landlords are buying up single-family homes, converting them to student rentals, renting them out for exorbitant sums, deferring maintenance. And once there's, you know, it doesn't take many student rentals on a block before it becomes an unappealing place for families and year-round residents to live.
Thanks, Ms. Taub. Ms. Pam, how about you?
Now, I have a hobby horse. It's I want to bring something like Sunnyside Gardens, Queens to Amherst. That's one, two and three family attached, energy efficient townhouses, which are owner occupied. It allows you to mix renters with homeowners. All of our new building recently has been for renters. And that's good, but we need to improve our home ownership opportunities if people are to be able to build wealth. And I'd like to combine this with some of our efforts at reparations, which would be assisting some African heritage first-time homeowners with the down payment. We started out as renters in Sunnyside Gardens and we ended up buying our first little house. And that allowed us to get our foot into really the economy of America. So the, also, this is planned, is a garden apartment plan with a, with a large shared green and little individual front and backyards. It has the things that I keep thinking make life fun and possible, create community. And not just, we're, we're not interested in just profit centers. We're interested in homes that build families and build community and strengthen Amherst. So that is what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
First of all, just quickly back to footnote M, which seems to become a, a key topic here this evening or this afternoon. If it comes back in any form that it originally was presented, I would never vote for it. So I don't know what all this hoopla is about. What I did here at one point was that there might be a way in which certain areas in the RG, which would be appropriate for greater density, kind of overlay approach, might be considered. But I would be looking at that very, very carefully. So I certainly not in support of what was originally presented and would never vote for it whenever it comes back, if it comes back. So I want to make that clear. Secondly, I think Dorothy's got some interesting ideas, but in order to realize those, we need zoning change, particularly in the BL. So hopefully she'll support those kinds of changes to realize her vision. Because I share with her the idea of creating these kinds of, of developments, particularly in the downtown and village centers. They're not five-story buildings. They're not the kinds of buildings that some people have been upset about. They're actually three-story. They would have interior courtyards, they'd be mixed use and there would be parking. And this is possible in, in our, in the BL zone in our downtown, if we can change our, our zoning bylaws. And so hopefully she'll work with me if she's on the council and I'm on the council to bring about that change. So zoning reform is not a bad thing. It's not a dirty word and actually could lead to some of the ultimate goals that I think many of us share in terms of affordable housing. I thought the question was about affordable housing. So I was going to start listing all the things we've done in the last year related to that in terms of 132 North Hampton Road, in terms of Belcher Town Road, East Street School, and, and further things that are coming down the pike and also the comprehensive housing policy. But my time is up.
Well, you've got your, you've got your concluding statement to come, Mr. Ryan. Okay, so it is time for the concluding statements now. And Ms. Pam, we're going to begin with you. You've got two minutes on this one.
Okay, well, I will use an image that came to mind yesterday, which is of the Greek military formation of the phalanx, which is warriors standing back-to-back, spears pointed outward and shields interlocked. That is the position that we in Precinct 10 are in right now. We are under attack or changed, depending upon your point of view, in about six places at once. We cannot keep up. There are meetings every day. We have townhouses coming onto a major, beautiful residential street. This could be good. But we have to be very aware that it not become just another building like archipelago built downtown. We have a brook which is not intermittent, which floods, which has been flooding. I've been hearing about it for years. I have friends who have walked and tracked that brook and have drawn the plans. And yet there are some people who think it's intermittent and therefore could be filled in and have more housing constructed. We have the dormitories to the north and we have the reconstruction of the student, graduate student housing on Lincoln, which will be good if the building machines can keep from impacting the residents too much. And we have building on the other end of here. We have everywhere we go, we are new housing, new initiatives are being made. Each one is not necessarily terrible, but so many of them at once. Then, and they all are moving away from family housing. They're all for rental housing. So if we can influence some of those and change some of those so that they include family housing for young faculty, graduate students and be housing that a family would want to live in, then we'll be moving in the right direction, which I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ryan, your concluding remarks?
Well, I guess I, I see things very differently, at, at least in this sense with Dorothy. The, it's not an image, but a phrase that's been running through my mind and the last couple of weeks is a line from Emily Dickinson. I dwell in possibility. And when I look around Amherst right now, I see possibility everywhere. And I hope people are more open to some of the changes that are being proposed and trust in the process. Because we have a very robust process that we follow very carefully. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to the next two years. I'm excited about some of the changes that already have been taking place and are going to take place. And I'm hoping people will join with me in making some of these possibilities a reality. I'm proud of my record, but I want to particularly highlight three votes that I took that I'm very proud of. The first was to pass the inclusionary zoning bylaw, which mandates that any multiple unit project over 10 units would require that there be affordable units as part of the, of the project. I'm proud of my vote for the CPA funding for the 28-unit affordable housing project on 132 North Hampton Road, a vote which cost me considerably in my neighborhood, but it was the right vote because it addressed a need for our most vulnerable members of our population. And I'm also proud of my vote for the wage and tip theft bylaw, which provides protections and also enforcement mechanisms on behalf of those who work in our many downtown restaurants and food establishments. Going forward, as I've already said this afternoon, I want to stress economic recovery. I strongly support the creation of a destination parking garage behind the CVS, in the CVS lot. It would cost the taxpayer nothing. It's on town-owned land. There are a whole host of provisions that would protect it from any kind of change that people might be afraid of. It really would benefit our downtown business community. I've already spoken, I think, about expanding our housing opportunity, the importance of that in terms of providing badly needed housing and revenue to our town. I want to address the issue of quality of life, which I've already spoken about in our neighborhoods. We must strengthen the rental registration bylaw. And I want to promote an ongoing dialogue and conversation. So I don't quite view the relationship with the university that I think sometimes Dorothy has. We need to speak with them in conversation and dialogue and work together for a future that we all want and, and hope for.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Ms. Taub?
Yes, I prepared some closing remarks. I seek a seat on town council from District Three because Amherst is a wonderful, one-of-a-kind place. And I would like to be part of helping to preserve what makes Amherst unique while also helping it to grow by restoring vibrancy to downtown in our village centers. With our new town council form of government, we officially became the city of the town of Amherst, which is in a way very act. We are a town which contains a city. UMass with its high rises and grand structures looks like a city and the rest is the town. And I would say most of us chose to live here for the town part. I don't think anyone moved to Amherst for an urban experience or because they wanted to live in a densely populated community. And certainly our colleges and our university are a big part of what makes Amherst special. But it is our year-round population who on average pays more in taxes, provides our schools with students, serves on our town council and governing board and has a stake in our long-term future, one that's measured in decades, not semesters. So yet, almost all our new construction over the past several years has been for these kind of high-end dormitory-style apartments for students. And almost no new single-family and starter homes have been built. And I would like to be part of reversing this trend because it is our year-round community that we really have to sustain and expand. If I were to serve on town council, I would work hard to reach the town's goal of carbon neutrality by 2050, which really isn't so far away. I support funding and implementing the recommendations of the Community Service Working Group. Our town boards and commissions must include greater representation from Amherst BIPOC community. This is long overdue and will be among my first council priorities. I am also running to help ensure transparency and accountability on the part of the council and other governing boards. I will listen to my constituents and advocate for your concerns to be addressed and your vision for our community to be realized. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all of the candidates for participating in this forum, but especially for being willing to represent the citizens of Amherst in your local government. Voters, remember to visit Amherst Media to view the candidate's short presentations there and to look for their statements on the town bulletin board. And be sure to pick up a copy of the Amherst Bulletin on the Friday before Election Day for the League's election guide. And now, good afternoon to all of you.